PM. Clerk Seeger, can you please take roll call?
Borninski.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Foster is absent. Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Seeger is present. Slavens.
Good evening.
Snyderman.
Hello.
Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
移到 Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. No motion passes. Next item is, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from 3:12, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we will do public comment on agenda items only. Agenda items only up at the podium. If you'd like to make a comment, please do so. State your name and give public comment.
Good evening. Daniel McCoslin, 2011 Lot's Road. I'm commenting on an agenda item G1. I'm going to voice my concerns about G1. As we stated in the hearing for rezoning. G1 is the only property that has been relieved of the corporate overlay. And it has no overlay at all. So you're setting a precedent here that it's going to be the only property on Lot's Road, exempted from the corporate overlay and has no central business overlay or any type of other site standard overlay. The community planner had stated before that all properties need overlays. So here we are exactly across the street. We're looking at property now that we are in an overlay district still. We're still in a corporate overlay. They've been exempted from the corporate overlay. We are now going to be subject to the central business overlay. They have no overlay. It's patently unfair. It's patently, uh, it's discriminatory. There's no way that this could, uh, you want to go back and say this was from a earlier time period, from a different administration. The key there, the key here is, is one time these were going to be owned condominium units that would be eligible for homestead relief tax. That has changed now. It states in the documents here, this is going to be a rental facility which would, in my mind, I'm not a lawyer, but it would fall under a commercial property. So it should be subject to the central business, central business district overlay. What's fair is fair. Why does one side of the street have one set of no rules and the other side of the street is being held to all the rules? So I would ask that this is tabled, sent back, reevaluated, meets the configurations that we're going forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay. Anyone online who want to raise your hand if you have public comment on agenda items only? Okay. Public comment on agenda items only is closed. Next item is a motion to pay the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month in Canton Township.
I'll make the motion. I move, we approve a resolution declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month in Canton Township, whereas the year 2024 marks the 56th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, and whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all citizens without regard to race, color, religion, sex, family, status, disability, or national origin, and whereas equality of opportunity for all is a fundamental policy of this nation, state, and township, and whereas barriers which diminish the rights and limit the options of any citizen will ultimately diminish the rights of all citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Canton Board of Trustees designates the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in Canton Township. We encourage the residents of our community to join in this observance.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay. Can I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider purchase of water meters and metering control devices. Item C2, consider approving the purchase of brass fittings and stop boxes and rods. Item C3, consider approving the purchase of water main repair clamps. Item C4, consider approving the purchase of water main parts. Item C5, consider approval of the purchase of a CAT 430 AMPR backhoe loader. And item C6, consider approval of a rooftop unit number two placement at the summit on the park.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is item G1.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution. Approval of planned development district amendment number three and approval of the site plan for Springs at Willow Creek formerly named Wellington on the Willow, Tremont Place and Tremont Place. The, one moment. Okay. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of amendment number three to the Springs at Willow Creek Plan Development District and approval of the site plan for Willow, for Springs at Willow Creek located on the east side of Lot's Road between Ford Road and Cherry Hill, whereas Planning Commission reviewed the amended planned development plan and plan development agreement, voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the request with conditions as it meets the criteria for plan development, results in definite benefit to the zoning, to the community, and complies with the applicable site design requirements of the zoning ordinance except where modifications are approved or revisions are required. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan and applicable criteria, voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the request with conditions as it is consistent with the planned development district and conditional rezoning agreement and meets the requirements of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve amendment number three to the Springs at Willow Creek Plan Development and the Site Plan for Springs at Willow Creek as proposed in the Plan Development Agreement and Site Plan Documents, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including compliance with the signed standards of Article 6A and subject to applicable review of the Lot's Road Sewer District Pump Station reimbursement agreement by Township Legal Council and the Municipal Services Department prior to Township Board action on the reimbursement agreement.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The project sponsor proposes a third amendment to the Final Plan Development District PDD for Springs at Willow Creek formerly named Wellington on the Willow, Tremont Place and Tremonte Place, including increasing the number of units from 268 to 280. The project sponsor, Continental Properties Company, proposes to acquire the project from the original project sponsor. The development consists of 14 townhome buildings, 20 units each. There are two stories, a one-story clubhouse with a pool, six detached garage buildings, three with 12 spaces each and three with eight spaces each, a mail building, a maintenance building, two pet parks, and a playground. Each unit will have a dedicated entrance from the exterior. The main purpose of the third amendment to the PDD is due to a requirement of Wayne County to locate stormwater ponds outside of floodway areas. The previously approved plans included stormwater detention ponds within the floodway areas south of Willow Creek. As a result of the requirement to locate the stormwater ponds outside of floodway areas, the stormwater ponds have been moved southward and the development layout has been reconfigured, increasing the open space from 60% to almost 64% of the site. In addition to changing the owner and configuring the development area to locate the stormwater ponds outside of the floodway areas, the proposed amendments to the PDD also include the following major changes. One, increasing the number of units from 268 to 280 pursuant to the previously approved conditional rezoning agreement, which allowed a maximum of 282 units. Two, changing the proposed ownership from a condominium development to a rental development. Three, changing the architecture of the residential buildings. And four, reducing the number of phases from four to one. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything else to add other than, um, committee planner Patrick Sloan is also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have anything, Patrick?
Nothing else to add other than the project sponsor representatives are here this evening and can answer any questions about the project.
Thank you. I do want to, I don't know if the board did also note that we, there was a project history also. We don't have Summer Foster here, who was our liaison. She's out sick today, so she can't talk about, um, give us an update on what the meeting, what happened at the meeting, but if you read the packet, you know. Okay. Any questions or comments? Kate?
Yeah. A question for you, Patrick. Just tonight, we're not being asked to do anything with the zoning on this. This is simply the amendment to the PDD and site plan. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. There's a previously approved conditional rezoning agreement that rezoned the-
Patrick, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do I come through now? I think I just need to hold it closer.
Thank you.
There's a previously approved conditional rezoning agreement for the property that rezoned it with conditions to R6, and that was a zoning that took place several years ago. So that conditional rezoning agreement remains in effect, and there are no zoning changes outside of what's considered as part of the PDD amendment.
Thank you. And then for the project sponsors, I was wondering if you have any plans for any low-income housing in this development?
Yes. If you could go to the podium, please.
Hi there. Thanks for having us here this evening. My name's Jordan Tyken. We do not have any plans for low-income housing. These would all be market rate apartment homes.
Okay. And what would be the market rate?
I can pull that up here. Uh, so we would have a range of studio through three-bedroom. So the studio units would go for approximately $1,460. And then ranging up to the three beds, those would range from $2,500 to $2,700 a month.
Okay. So I, to me, that sounds pretty expensive. I can't tell you what to charge, but I would hope that the board would continue to think about doing something to help our community with some, some kind of housing that's more affordable.
If, if I may just add to that, um, you know, our rents are comparable to the comp set. You look at other apartments in, in Canton Township or surrounding communities, um, the rents that we're planning on at this point are comparable to those.
I understand that. Yeah.
Any other questions? Stephen?
Oh.
Nope.
Actually, first for you, Patrick. Trying to remember the history on this location. I feel like in my mind, when we originally approved this concept years ago, that there was some mixed-use aspect to it. Has that fallen by the wayside?
Yeah. I think in the, it may have been the previously approved Second Amendment, because looking at the original approved PDD, and this was before I started working with the township, so I don't, I wasn't here at the time, but looking through the files, it looked like there were some units that were, um, they were almost designed like live-work types of units. And I think by the time it had got either to the First or the Second Amendment, it'd become purely a residential type of product.
Okay. Do you guys do any, or do they do any developments like that?
Uh, no. This would be strictly residential. I would add, you know, our, we offer a suite of amenities. Technically, I wouldn't, clubhouse may not be deemed, you know, commercial, but, um, you know, we have a 24-hour fitness center for our residents, pool, um, you know, playground. There's the nature trail through the conservation easement on the plan, et cetera. So I think in terms of offering resident amenities, we certainly are meeting the mark there, but there is no retail or, you know, other office, other use planned for this development.
Thank you. I think I read somewhere that it's gated. Is that right?
Yep. That's correct.
Is it attended? Or is it just like a-
Yeah. So we, yep. So it would be a gate that residents would get in with a key fob. Guests could call in. There's a call box at the gate. We do have a leasing office that's staffed, and then we also have, you know, maintenance staff on site 24 hours. So there would be no one in a call box at the gate, but, you know, staff on property would be readily available in case of emergency.
You mentioned trails and things like that. Would that be open to the public at all?
Technically, no. The, uh, the trail through the conservation easement, the fence does not cut through the conservation easement, but, uh, the trail is technically outside of the gate, but it is on the private property. So that is, that would not be open to the public.
I also noticed in the Planning Commission, they asked about charging stations and that there were no plans at this time. What happens when a resident has an EV? How can that be supported?
Yeah. We, in other instances, in other communities, um, you know, we've looked at, uh, you know, you know, just making sure the electric capacity is available so that they could have a, you know, a standard wall, wall pack charger.
So they each get a garage that they would be able to put-
They would have to rent a garage for that.
Okay. They would have to rent a garage. Yeah. I may have some more questions, but Anne Marie, if someone else does.
Tanya, go ahead.
So what, like, you know, kind of gated community is pretty new to us here, and like, what other communities that you have built this kind of properties?
Yeah. So just to, just to give a really quick background on specifically Continental. Continental is three brands of communities that we typically develop. The flagship or premier brand being our Springs brand, and that's what we're proposing here in Canton. Typically, all of those communities are gated. We find that it offers residents an extra sense of security, and it's really a selling point to residents that their cars are behind a gate, that when they walk out of their private entrance, that, you know, where they are walking internally to the site is behind a fence and a gate.
What neighbor, like, do you have similar properties in, in the western Wayne County or?
Yeah. Continental, uh, you know, this, we're looking to enter southeast Michigan. We do have some portfolio properties on the west side of the state. Springs at Naps Crossing, that's in Grand Rapids, and then Springs at the Reserve in Wyoming, Michigan.
Kate, go ahead.
Sorry. Stephen's question made me think of another one. So when you're talking about EV charging in the garages, can you explain a little bit more about that?
Yeah. You know, without knowing the specific engineering, I'm not sure that I technically can. What I will say, uh, you know, it's something that needs to be discussed and reviewed with the fire marshal, um, you know, and with, uh, with the electric service provider. But, uh, you know, speaking with our operations team, typically we'll provide, uh, you know, capacity for future EV charging at those, you know, garage locations in the event that down the road Continental elects to equip all of those garages with in-place electric vehicle chargers.
Okay. I guess, because you had said something about wall charging and that confused me.
So given, you know, uh, that would be, that would be an option, you know, assuming that, you know, it's reviewed by the fire marshal and there's, you know, capacity. It's not a, it's not a safety concern to put a, you know, wall pack charger in a garage. We've seen it go both ways in different municipalities, and we haven't gotten that far in our, in our planning yet.
Okay. So you're, you're not talking about a wall outlet. You're talking about an actual dedicated charger. Is that correct?
That there would be potential for that to be installed down the road, given that, you know, our operations team and residents elect to want those.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because using a wall outlet is, is not an efficient way to charge an EV.
Right. Right.
I guess I would add to that, that I'd like to see in the future planning, there be an analysis done on what it would take, because I can't see, like, approving it down the road without it being a possibility of being able to install those things if, as an option for the resident.
Right. I mean, the EPA just announced that by 2032, half of all cars sold need to be EVs.
Yeah. Noted. The other thing I'll add, Continental, so we, we own and operate the communities we develop, so we have, you know, robust portfolio data of residents and are, you know, constantly considering customer experience and, you know, gauging from residents their EV needs. And it's something we're certainly talking about internally as well. So thanks for those comments and noted.
So Patrick, based on that, what would it take? Because you have some requirements for the PDD with major changes. What would it take to add to that, having each garage ready to plug and play chargers?
We would have to look at the PDD agreement and modify any of the language if there was going to be a requirement added for that, for, whether it was EV capable, EV ready, or EV installed.
Okay. So we could put that in our motion then? We would put it in our motion? Does it go back to planning for that?
It might not have to go back to planning, but if it's something that was an amendment or a revision to the PDD amendment where it was either a numerical standard or something based on whether it's a certain number, percentage of units, or however it's phrased. In some cases, it could be a condition. Other cases, if it's going to take more time, oftentimes some amendment like that or revision like that requires a couple extra weeks, in which case postponing action until the next available meeting if some details need to be worked out.
Okay. Does the board want to do that?
Can I, can I follow on on that? The, so just remind me, um, the policies that we're setting forth on electronic vehicles, is that, did we finish approving those, or that's part of the master plan or going to be done in conjunction with the master plan?
There's a, an EV ordinance that's been recommended by the Planning Commission. It hasn't yet been brought forward to the Township Board yet, but that proposed EV ordinance would require that multifamily dwellings that have garages would have to have one EV-ready space capable of supporting a Level 2 charging station per dwelling unit with a garage. Plus, there's a formula for a number of either EV-ready or EV-installed spaces per 25 parking spaces outside of a garage.
So, I mean, we're so close to doing that. I mean, I think that it makes sense to sort of analyze and what it, what it would take to come close to whatever we're going to be passing in the near future. Yes. Sorry.
My name's Eric Hahn with Continental. I work with Jordan. We do quite a bit of development in Chicagoland, and I don't know if any of you are aware, but the state of Illinois passed a law on January 1st regarding EV charging readiness. It's, it's definitely robust. It doesn't meet the market. It's more than what the market and our residents have now. So what that requires there is capability for a Level 2 charger, which is what I think you all are talking about. With that, what we've seen in our Chicagoland portfolio, about, I think, 1% or 2% of vehicles at one particular property have electric vehicles. And in that case, we installed two chargers outside, I believe. They're pay chargers, uh, because there's a lot of, you know, a lot of wattage required for that, and there's certain service requirements for the Level 2. In Illinois and throughout the state, starting on March 30th, any permits pulled after that date statewide have to comply with capability in the future for all spaces. Now, that's pretty significant. That assumes that 100% of cars will be electric vehicles currently. That really isn't the state of the market. And I know that the feds recently passed, um, some, or discussed the, the amount of EV, EV, electric vehicles sold being about half, but it's going to take a long time for adoption. And what we're able to do currently with the switchgear in the buildings, there's enough capacity at an EV Level 2 with each internal garage, and that goes for these 20-unit buildings we're talking about here, because we're pursuing similar developments. Beyond that, you know, I think we can supply EV charger readiness. In the state of Illinois, however, the resident has to supply the charger. That is standard policy there, and that's the policy we take too. So they can bring their equipment to charge. We make sure that the power available works. One other point, we're pursuing a similar development like the proposal before you in Commerce Township. There, um, we're going through the capacity analysis with DTE. They stipulated they don't have enough power in the grid. So without multimillion-dollar upgrades, I think a $13 million upgrade to the grid and substation, they stipulated that we couldn't have more than two EV chargers, I think. Is that right?
Yeah.
So there are major hurdles beyond the requirement, if enforced upon us as the applicant, that extend probably beyond us as a private developer, probably more so at the state level and with agencies like DTE. So having every stall EV capable is probably not reality in the near future, and we would need a great subsidy to do that.
So I went to the Center for Automotive Research last week where they gave statistics on 2023, and we're seeing a turnaround. In 2023, they saw a turnaround in vehicle sales for electric vehicles and hybrid, and we should be, and as we said, we are very close. Another thing is, is this is, these are high rents. The people that are paying this kind of rent are going to expect that, whether every owner owns it or not. You want to be capable of that in your garage spaces. So I think we could look at that definitely and come up with a proposed plan versus just not doing anything, since as Trustee Snyderman said, we're very close to passing something anyways. So you're saying you're going to put it in each garage, but EV capable?
We're going to have conduit and an electrical panel that can provide a Level 2 charger at 220, 40 amp.
That, that should probably be what we're proposing. I just would like your minds and our minds to get together and, and make sure so that when you come back, that you can state, we're going to either meet your future ordinance as it stands, or here's where we're going to fall short, and just so we can understand that.
Certainly. And we, yeah, we want to meet the market on that with our, with our clientele, for sure. What we're experiencing in Illinois, just as an example, where, where the law exists, the local municipalities are not enforcing the state law. In fact, they're saying, it's your risk. We have the state, state law. You have to comply by 2026 with the EV charging capability. And for us, it's a significant expense. It's, I think, $3,000 per stall to make them EV capable. So that's a lot of conduit. It's a lot of infrastructure. On the other hand, are we going to see more than our garage percentage in terms of adoption in the near future over the regular lifetime of the property, 20 or 30 years? I personally think that, that that level of adoption is unlikely, given what we're seeing on the road today of 1.2% vehicles being EV that are driven. So, but certainly understand the goals of this board.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's why we have, we're doing our own ordinance on that, basically. Anything else on that?
So is there anything in the- So is there anything in the PDD or site plans that, that show that you're going to be putting the conduit in and all that?
This is a new topic as of this evening.
So can we table it based on that, then? Have them come back looking at our new ordinance and see how they meet it, then?
We're on a pretty strict schedule with a few things.
Well, what is, what are the other milestones, Patrick, that we can talk about that in the future?
As it relates to the ordinance itself, the, the biggest question that we would have, if, if action were to be postponed, the reason, as we see it, would be to evaluate how the ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission may apply if it's adopted either before or after the development is approved. In other words, if it's effective, if it takes effect after a development is approved, but before permits are pulled for it, how is that effective in terms of not being on a site plan, but if it's part of the building permit, would it be effective at that time when permits are pulled? So that's a, more of a legal question for staff that we would have to explore in terms of timing of the ordinance taking effect after a development, but before permits are pulled.
Right, and the ordinance has not come before the board either, so we might want to tweak it also. But as it stands, I mean, I guess we could look at the draft version and determine how it's, it applies to this particular site.
Well, if we haven't passed the ordinance yet, though, then it's not in effect, right?
But if we pass this Third Amendment just of the PDD tonight, are there other milestones for the Springs at Willow Creek that we can discuss, a plan for EVs?
For this development, there wouldn't be for the board, because the Third Amendment is combined with the proposed site plan. So that's combined into the same motion, so this wouldn't come back to the board as a development proposal. What, the question that we have is, at a future meeting, if there's an ordinance amendment for EV chargers that does, that takes effect before the applicant starts pulling building permits, how could that amendment be applicable to a development that was previously approved? And that's a, a legal question we would have to get the answer to.
Okay.
Do you have something on that, Joe, in terms of the permit?
I'd have to do some research on that issue in order to, you know, give a, give a good answer to the, the board and what the legal impact of that would be, but I imagine that it's something that the developer could agree to in the PDD, but it sounds like that hasn't been part of the agreement up to this point in time, because this is the first time the issue's been raised. So if the board did decide to table the issue, you know, maybe until the next meeting, you know, maybe we could, you know, get some language into the agreement that meets the concerns that, that have been raised tonight.
Okay, so we, that, that's one issue. I guess, when's the next board meeting, then? Or we could do, I mean, we have a-
Two weeks.
Two weeks. We also have a study session, you know, so we could vote at the study session, which would bring it up quicker. We have a study session next week. Yeah. So if you look at it in the next week, we could vote on it then also.
Is there any way that it could be listed as a condition?
Right.
You know, approval with a condition to, you know, we're certainly open to continuing the discussion, but as Eric mentioned, you know, we're on a tight timeline, so just, you know, assurance that generally the, you know, board is supportive is what we're looking for here this evening.
Yeah, I'd asked that earlier, if we could add this on. So if we can, definitely, I think the board would move on to that, right?
Sure.
Yeah, typically, if something is added as a, as a condition, when something's considered, usually, we'd want to be specific in terms of what the condition is and make sure that both the applicant and the board are, are both in agreement with that condition. So, for example, the way that EV-capable spaces are defined in the draft ordinance, they're defined as an installed electrical panel capacity with dedicated branch circuit and cable raceway that is capped for future EV parking spaces. So in other words, for an EV-capable installation, that is something where there's panel capacity and there's conduit, but there's, there's no wiring, there's no charger hooked up to it. It's, you would have to put in the, the wiring and the electricity and the charger itself. So that's what, that's what EV-capable would be defined as. EV-ready is defined as both EV-capable, except that there's a dedicated branch circuit installed, and there's the wiring in the conduit, so that it's ready to be connected right there. So EV-ready is a little bit more installation, both with the panel and with the equipment in the conduit. And then the EV-installed is when it's a fully installed one. So there's different types of EV installations in terms of EV-capable, EV-ready, EV-installed.
And under that ordinance, this type of development, which of those would be required?
Capable. The way that the ordinance was recommended by the Planning Commission, there would be one EV-ready space capable of supporting a Level 2 EV charging station per dwelling unit with a garage. So that would be the panel, circuit, the conduit, and the installation in the conduit.
Only one, because you also said it depends on the number of units, correct? So that has to be part of the condition.
Right. This one would be for any unit with a garage, and then there's a formula in the proposed ordinance that has a certain number of either EV-ready or EV-installed spaces, one per 25 parking spaces, which take place outside of those garages.
So how many would that be?
We would have to calculate on the site plan how many parking spaces there are outside the garages, and do the calculations in terms of number of spaces and the number of EV stations that would have to be installed. And then it'd be a matter of design, whether more of them would be, for example, near the clubhouse or near, you know, tighter congregated areas of spaces.
That's what we don't know. They'd have to calculate how many they needed based on how many units they have.
We're just doing the math right now.
Okay.
So we would, I think, need a, and I'm just kind of going rough numbers here. We would, based on-
Or one per 25 spaces?
One per 25 spaces, excuse me.
So we have, we have 320 surface stalls currently, so it would be, if we're rounding up, 13.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We'd have a total of 50% garage parking, so that would be, that would mean 100 and, yeah, 140 total EV spaces. So for, pretty much half the units would be, under that premise, would be EV charger-capable for the garage, which is pretty close to what we're talking about in Illinois with the same sort of challenge ahead, that lies ahead for many agencies and us as a private entity.
I'm sorry, you have how many garages in this company?
A 50% attached parking ratio, and then there's the additional detached stalls, but-
Yeah, so we have 112 attached garages and then 60 detached garage spaces, and then 320 surface stalls.
Two, two attached garages per building are tandem, meaning that you could put a dual charger in that garage if you had two EV electric-
I think Patrick's calculating, but what'd you come up with?
I haven't done the math on, on all of it. So the way it reads is, in the ordinance, one EV-ready space capable of supporting a Level 2 EV charging station per dwelling unit with a garage, plus one EV-ready or EV-installed space capable of supporting a Level 2 or 3 charging station for every 25 parking spaces rounded up, plus one EV-installed space per, or with a Level 2 or Level 3 EV charging station for every 25 spaces rounded up. So for every 25 spaces, there's actually two EV charging spaces, two EV charging spaces, one that must be installed, the other must be either ready or installed.
So why don't we come up with a conditional proposal based on the ordinance for the next meeting next week? We could look at that. You can make a proposal saying, this is what the ordinance is saying, this is what we're proposing to do, and we can vote on that next week. Making a proposal to us versus having the exact numbers right now? Everyone okay with that? Okay?
Table one week?
Yes. Table one week, and I'll come back with a proposal of how many they'll have, based on what we're asking for in the ordinance. Might, you might be looking at what the ordinance says and say, this is too many, but this is what we propose, and then we can vote on that.
So you want a motion to table?
Yes, but is there any other questions on anything else or comments?
I would just say that if we table, then we should also make sure we have legal look at the proposed.
Have the what, sorry?
At the new, the new condition.
Yes.
Make sure that legal looks at it.
Yep.
Yeah, I would say, since the ordinance is not in place, I'm willing for it to not have to be exactly following the ordinance, but it can't be nothing, in my opinion.
Right, right. Exactly.
And so, in conversations with municipal services, come up with something that's reasonable, but also significant, I would say.
I agree with that.
Okay. I did want to just mention really quickly something else. You had said what the rents were, and you said it's standard in Canton. Are you looking at total Canton? Because we do have rent changes all the way across the community, and this is part of the eastern part of Canton.
Yeah, so we're looking at other Class A, new market rate communities in Canton and beyond for that matter, many of which, the, the new additions in Canton, as many, many of you probably know, are much larger units with much higher rents. You know, for instance, we had looked, we had looked at Fillmore Place, Redwood. The average rent across those communities is much greater. These are more affordable than those units are per class as defined by HUD.
Yeah, because eastern part of Canton is a different rent rate than the western part.
Sure.
So we do have that gradient going across the community.
But, but similarly, many of the communities in this part of Canton are older and subject to, to lower rents, just based on age.
I just want to also mention the project history. So just to let everybody know, in 2016, a conditional rezoning was approved by the Township Board in 16. It changed the zoning from light industrial to R6, attached residential, and removed the land area from the corporate park overlay. And that is actually in effect until January 26, 27. So this was in the corporate park overlay district, and it was removed at that time. So the board did vote on it then.
I do remember at the time, I think it was, I feel like it was a bank that came forward. I don't know if that's in the history at all. It wasn't actually a developer at the time.
I remember when we, we actually amended the, the DDA, removed this parcel from the DDA, which is what prompted the library removing themselves from the DDA capture.
Hmm.
And we intentionally did that, because our intention was to have this area residential. And then I amended, prior to 2020, my precincts, anticipating that we would have these voters in the future. It has been a long road to get us-
Yeah.
-to this place that we started in 2016. But we never got those voters, but we do have capacity at those voting locations for the voters when they show up.
Great. We do have the history, if anyone wants to know more details. Okay, so what is the wording of the conditional motion we're going to make?
We're-
That we were table-
We're just tabling.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. So to table.
Madam Supervisor, are you making a motion to table?
Yes.
There's support?
Support. Motion made by myself, supported by Trustee Breninsky. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, thank you. We'll see you next week. Item G2, consider first reading of amendments to the Code of Ordinances and the Zoning Ordinance to amend several sections related to fences, walls, and borders.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce, for a first reading, the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton, as provided in the attached ordinance, which amends Appendix A zoning, Sections 1.03 definitions in Section 2.20, fences, walls, and borders, and amends Chapter 78, Article 5, fences, walls, and borders.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The proposed amendments to Section 1.03 and Section 2.2, fences of those zoning ordinance, and proposed amendments to Chapter 78, Article 5, the Code of Ordinances will update standards related to fences, walls, and borders by relocating them from the general ordinances to the zoning ordinance, modifying definitions and modifying standards for applications, permits, and construction. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add at this point, but the community planner, Patrick Sloan, is here to answer any questions.
Patrick, do you want to give kind of a high-level overview of what is changing here?
Sure. So this amendment came about as a result of many variances that have been requested over the years with the Zoning Board of Appeals for fences. Many of them relate to side yard fences that are higher than four feet, and in some cases, they are front yard fences on corner lots, because corner lots have two front yards, according to the ordinance, along both streets. So the Zoning Board of Appeals adopted a motion to recommend that the Planning Commission review the fence ordinance and propose amendments. So it was a long process. It took over a year to go through it, because there were a number of things that we looked at in the history and looked at in terms of the things that were causing building division staff issues when they were doing fence permits, as well as homeowners that came in in the meantime with fence variance requests. So in our write-up, we gave a summary of some of the major changes to the proposed ordinance. Probably some of the more significant changes are, currently, there's a requirement for a property owner to get permission from a neighbor to build a fence within three feet of a lot line, and that provision's proposed to be removed. The neighbor's permission would only be required if the fence was going to be on the lot line and, and along a shared lot line, or if there was something that, there was a grading issue that the building division thinks will affect an adjacent neighbor, then in those cases, the neighbor consent would be required. But currently, anybody within three feet of a neighboring lot line requires the neighbor's consent. So in some areas of the community, some fences don't necessarily follow lot lines, because either they didn't get the neighbor's consent to build it within three feet of a lot line, or it was otherwise not approved. So in some cases, the fences look irregular, the way that they're built, just because of not obtaining a neighbor's consent. So that provision will be amended. Another one is that in many residential districts, in the side yard of a property, the fence can only be four feet high, and the Planning Commission has recommended to allow for side yards to have fences up to six feet in height, but to drop down to four feet if it's within 15 feet of that front corner of the house. So in other words, some of the side yard could be enclosed with a six-foot-high fence, but within 15 feet of the front corner of the house, it would have to drop down to four feet, so that you wouldn't have a, a six-foot fence right alongside the front of the house to kind of give a walled-off appearance to it. And then finally, the, probably the most significant change was regarding corner lot fences. And those changes are for corner lot fences that are corner lots along major roads, like in some cases where a subdivision entrance is along a major road, and those entry homes, they've got a frontage along the major road, like Warren or Sheldon or something like that, and they have their main, their main frontage along the interior road. In those cases, the proposed ordinance would allow a six-foot fence along the major road, but it couldn't be six feet within 15 feet of the front of the house. So in other words, there are many homes in Canton that have this condition. In some cases, the six-foot fence goes right up to the front of the house. In some cases, it just encloses the rear yard. And what we looked at doing was to allow a yard to be enclosed along a major road for safety and privacy purposes and noise purposes, but to not have that six-foot fence go all the way up to the front of the house. And then finally, the corner lot fences along non-major roads, like interior subdivision lot roads. The Zoning Board of Appeals has gotten a number of variance requests for people that want to put a fence, they say, in their side yard, where actually, that's a front yard. It's just adjacent to the front lot line that is the non-major road, where they don't have access. So a lot of people use that like a side lot line. And the proposed amendment would allow, within that front yard area, to have a fence, but it would have to be an ornamental fence. but it would have to be an ornamental fence. So it would have to be not more than four feet high. It would have to be 50% open when viewed from the perpendicular, and it would have to be a decorative style. So no chain link in a front yard setback in a subdivision or condominium corner lot. So that was something that, in looking at it with the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission, to allow corner lot owners to have some kind of fencing in the non-primary front yard on the corner lot, but to not have something in the front yard setback that was not decorative or not nice in appearance. And the reason for that is because even though on a corner lot, that area may appear like a side yard, that lot area is actually adjacent to the neighbor's front yard. So when the neighbor looks in their front yard, and they look off to the side, and there's a fence basically in the neighbor's front yard setback, we had recommended that that fence be decorative and mostly open so that it couldn't be walling off anything. It'd be more for decorative and enclosure and security. So that's a brief, at least brief by my standard, summary of the major changes in the ordinance. And without, I'd be happy to take any questions.
That's a brief Patrick standard. So there's a lot of good changes there from some of the people that have been asking us. You guys have any questions, or any of the board members? Michael?
I have a question. Are we still requiring that the permission from the neighbor be notarized?
Double-check that.
The reason I ask this is, when I got my fence, I had to have four of my neighbors, and I had to coordinate the notary, which became a very costly endeavor. And the company I worked with told me at the time, this is anecdotal, that Canton Township was the only community that required the permission form to be notarized, and that this is part of the reason why it's a larger burden in Canton Township. So I have not done the research to determine if that's factually true, that we are the only community that requires notarization. I do know that, A, asking your neighbor to give you permission to put a fence on the property line, and then B, asking your neighbor to drive to a UPS store to sign a notarized statement, is a lot to ask of a neighbor who might be having a very busy lifestyle. And I just was curious if we wanted to maybe talk about. I understand the value of having a notarized document. For our purposes, it would protect us from somebody forging their neighbor's signature, but I was just curious if that is a common occurrence, or if other communities do require that notarized signature.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know of any other communities that require the notarized signature. This is the first community that I've worked in where that's been a requirement. I just went through the proposed ordinance, and it does have, it does retain the requirement for written notarized consent from an adjacent property owner if that fence is on the property line, or if there is grading proposed that will impact the adjacent neighbor. So the notarized requirement, as you stated, would guarantee that the signature is not being forged, and that it is the neighbor consenting to something located on their property line, or to some type of grading that would impact their property. I know that for applicants that have come in with fence applications, I think there is at least one notary that has worked in the building division, where they've been able to expedite that process by having someone go to the building division, notarize the signature, or to find a notary somewhere in the building. So I know a lot of applicants have done that by seeking out township services.
But this is a notarized signature of your neighbor. This is not the applicant's. My concern here is that we are putting a substantial burden on somebody. And it's something that I, it's been something, you know, I guess I'll look into it and see if there are other communities that do it. It's, I mean, I understand why we put in the requirement. Like, City of Plymouth doesn't require neighbor's permission, and, you know, that's, they choose not to. We added it because it's good. We don't want to be in the middle of disputes between neighbors, and this helps because we say, you know, "Look, you agreed to this. We don't need to be in the middle of a fence dispute between you and your neighbor." But I just, I feel like perhaps that, like notarizing that document, which is typically reserved for like wills, trusts, durable power of attorney, affidavits, pretty heavy legal things require notaries. The signature on a fence permission, it does feel a little heavy-handed to me, but I will reserve that. Maybe I'll do some digging and see if comparable communities also have that notary requirement. And if your team is, you know, believes that that notary requirement is protecting Canton Township from all sorts of disputes or liabilities regarding fences, then I will defer to that wisdom.
Yeah, that's something we can research, and there are a couple of different things we could do. If there's the two notary requirements, if it's on the lot line, or if it is a fence that will impact the drainage on adjacent property. Right now, it reads as written notarized consent. If this were to be revised to just be written consent without the notarized requirement, I think the township could come up with some administrative requirements to ensure that it was, in fact, the adjacent property owner that signed it.
Right, like send out a notice and say, hey, you have to wait 10 days to see if they object. Just, we send them a note saying, hey, your neighbor's doing this, do you have any objections? You know, give them a time, they have to have a waiting period or whatever. That's another way to do it.
Right. Or just put in the ordinance that if you forge your neighbor's signature, you are guilty of a civil misdemeanor and subject to a $500 fine. And then you're not going to your neighbor saying, hey, can I put a fence on the yard, which automatically means you got to do something for your neighbor usually. And oh, by the way, can you drive to the township and get this notarized? And they're like, whoa, can I take out your trash for you while I'm at it, and rake your leaves, and what else do you want me to do for you?
Is that what your neighbor said?
Yeah, I think
Diane?
I think in a lot of cases, if a neighbor wanted to put a fence on the lot line, not necessarily up to the lot line on their own property, but they wanted to have it along the common lot line, I think in many communities, they probably have something where they're joint applicants, or there's one primary applicant, and there's a neighbor consenting as either a co-applicant or otherwise allowing a fence to be built, essentially a portion of which on their property, or to be putting post holes on the property line. Probably a way to get that approval in writing without it necessarily being notarized.
Yeah.
Diane?
I thought one of the solutions was to have a survey done to prove that it is on their land, so that you don't have to have permission from them. Is that, I thought they were changing that.
Correct. There still would be a survey requirement. It would just be a matter of if an applicant wants to have the fence entirely on their property line, they would be having the post holes on their property line, and the fence would go almost up to the property line, not quite. So the survey would definitely be required to make sure it's on the applicant's property line. But the survey would also be required if they wanted to put it along the joint common line where it's on both of the neighbor's property lines. That survey would be a determination of where the fence is, and that both owners essentially share in part of the responsibility of the fence.
Questions or comments? So do we table it until we find out about that part, or, I mean
No.
Well, for a second reading, but what if we find out other communities aren't notarizing it, we want to change it?
And we'll just amend the ordinance in a year or something? I'll suck it up for a year. I mean, you know.
You aren't doing your fence.
And for this evening, tonight is the first reading, and the proposals for a second reading on April 9th. So I think the next few days might be enough time to, the next week or so, enough time to look at that.
Yeah.
And if we strike the notary requirement, I think we can do some research in the next few days to figure that out.
Okay, so between the first and second reading, we can make a change then, maybe if we see that. Okay. All right. All those in favor of the proposals, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Great, thank you. Item G3, authorization to sign a contract with Michigan Department of Transportation.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the above referenced contract and authorizing the signature of the township supervisor. A certified copy of the contract in this resolution will be sent to MDOT and adopt a resolution stating that the township agrees to abide by all guidelines, stipulations, and requirements set forth in the contract. And the resolution in connection with the performance of services under this contract, the Charter Township of Canton agrees to comply. State of Michigan provisions for prohibition of discrimination in state contracts is set forth in Appendix A, the contract provision will be included in all subcontracts relating to this contract.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. This contract sets forth a grant from MDOT to Canton Township for the completion of roadway and sidewalk reconstruction for affected areas by alkali silica reaction in the Charter Township of Canton. Further, the township agrees to abide by all guidelines, stipulations, and requirements set forth in the attached contract. This, of course, we were given assistance by Representative Purie to get this money from the state, brought back to Canton Township, and the way they're routing it is through MDOT. So that's why it's, we've gotten it this way. But also, the five subdivisions targeted for repair are Brookside Village Sub. #5, Meadowbrook Sub. #1, River Park Sub. #1, 2, and 3, Stonegate Sub., Sunflower Village Sub. #8, and 12. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. As you know, this has been, we've been working on this for a while, and we feel confident with Engineering Services, we can get the ASR taken care of in the township over this year and next year. So we're excited about, this is the first, we're also, we've been in design stage for a while, but this is officially getting us the dollars to get to the township.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the board?
So when is it going to begin construction?
We're looking at early May.
And is there like, have, is it based on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 here, or is it going to
Yeah, so Sunflower, Sunflower 8, and Brookside, no, Stonegate is the worst ones. That's where we're going to start this year.
Okay.
Michael?
I just want to say how, it just feels really good to be voting on this resolution. I'm reminded of 2018 when the board, 2017 when the board asked for a roads task force, and then 2018 when the board unanimously advanced the question onto the ballot for creating the local roads program, and the community supported it. We said in our resolution that the state of neighborhood roads was drastically impacting property values in Canton Township. And that was a true statement. And a substantial amount of the problem was the ASR. By getting almost the same amount of money in the previous year for Canton Center Road and completely tearing that out, we got rid of a substantial amount of the ASR in Canton Township. And with this $5 million appropriation going through MDOT, we will be able to effectively eliminate all of the ASR in Canton Township. And that is not an insignificant feat. It will drastically impact or improve the commute of every resident in Canton Township, and this will help preserve property values in these communities. And I'm extremely grateful that Ranjiv Purie was able to work to bring this money home, and I'm grateful that we've had five years of administering the local roads program. And I'm looking forward to fixing all of these neighborhood streets.
Anyone else? Kate?
I just wanted to say, everything that Michael said, I agree with.
Thanks. Yep, I think we're all, we're all in the same boat with that one. Thank you, State Rep. Purie. And thanks to our team for helping us get there. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G4, consider authorizing an increase to purchase order for the sidewalk replacement program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve an increase of $90,000 to the subject purchase order to $1,029,000 to provide for additional funds in the amount of $50,000 for Metro Act repairs, and $40,000 for road repair to Rotundo Construction Incorporated and the budget amendment listed, and to issue a purchase order in the amount of $500,000 to Rotundo Construction Incorporated for the construction of various sidewalk gaps within the township.
Support?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. In February of 2023, Canton Township publicly bid the annual sidewalk repair program as a two-year project. At the March 14, 2023 meeting of the Township Board, this work was awarded to Rotundo Construction, and purchase orders were authorized for the 2023 and 2024 work. The 2024 purchase order, as listed, has been issued in the amount of $939,000 based on the 2023 board action. Currently, Engineering Services is requesting an increase of the listed PO to $1,029,000 to include work through the Metro Act budget and local road millage budget. The public hearing for the sidewalk replacement program was held on December 12, 2023, to fulfill the requirements of public notice requiring the 2024 sidewalk replacement. Additionally, Engineering Services is requesting a second purchase order be issued to Rotundo Construction from the State of Michigan MEDC grant funding for construction of various sidewalk gaps. These are more funds that the board has allocated to create a walkable community. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Do we know which sidewalks, gaps we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, these are, this particular part of the sidewalk gap program has to do with when Engineering Services is actually working in an area, they come across sidewalk gaps, they're going to fill them in. So this is, it kind of represents an evolution of Engineering Services, how they're dealing with when the sidewalk contractor is out there taking on, we want, we want that, because they're there, we want them to tackle more things. Sidewalk gaps is one of those. If there's a problem with the road, they want to take, run a catch base or something, they want to take care of it right then and there. And then the Metro Act has to do with many utility, there's disturbance to utility. So it'll be various ones. Not large ones, but they'll be, they'll be various ones, so.
We will be having a study session showing us some of the gaps that are being closed.
Yeah, there'll be more detail coming, in a couple of weeks.
All right. Anything?
There's a lot of wisdom in doing it this way. Good move.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G5, consider award of a contract to Cipron Contracting Incorporated for the 2024 Local Road Improvement Program, concrete.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a contract and issuance of purchase order for the 2024 Local Road Improvements Program to Cipron Contracting Incorporated for a total award of $1,230,295, and approve the continuation of this contract as described in the background for 2025 through 2028 to Cipron Contracting Incorporated.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Engineering Services is requesting award of contract and issuance of a purchase order with Cipron Contracting in the amount of $1,230,295 for the 2024 Local Road Improvement Program, which is also part of, you can see the strategy online to see what's going to be completed, but Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
No, this is, this is this year's program that we're doing, so nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. More work being done. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G6, consider award of contract to Nagel Paving for the 2024 Local Improvement Program, asphalt.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a contract and issuance of a purchase order for the Local Road Improvements Program to Nagel Paving Company for a total award of $748,857.25, and approve continuation of this contract as described in the background for 2025 to 2028 to Nagel Paving Company.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Brininsky. Engineering Services is requesting award of contract and issuance of a purchase order of Nagel Paving Company in the amount of $748,857.25 for the 2024 Local Road Improvement Program, asphalt. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add to this one.
Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G7, consider approval of Heritage Park fishing pier and bridge deck replacement.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the above-listed budget amendment to award a contract and issue a purchase order to Carpentry Concepts at 1-8786.
a contract and issue a purchase order to Carpentry Concepts at 1-8786, Susanna, Livonia, Michigan, 48152, in the amount of $33,000 for the approval of Heritage Park fishing pier and bridge deck replacement.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. In 2019, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan, and subsequently, the township issued capital improvement bonds to fund the CIP. The CIP includes the replacement of fishing pier and summit pedestrian bridge decking. Specifically, the project includes replacement of damaged and weathered deck boards and handrails on both the fishing pier and pedestrian bridge that connects the summit. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything else to add to the item.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G8, approval to purchase ESRE training for GIS Coordinator.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount not to exceed $3,000 to purchase ARC GIS Enterprise Administration workflows training for the GIS Coordinator.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. ITI is requesting permission from the board to purchase training for the ITI GIS Coordinator, enabling them to administer upgraded ESRE installation effectively. Per the township purchasing policy, this level of expense requires board approval. Director Abegbu, do you want to add anything?
It's kind of crucial for us to understand that the ESRE training, because ESRE is the platform that handles our geographic information system, and we made a decision to hire a GIS coordinator, so we are attempting to upgrade the ESRE instance and to be on a broader platform that, on a broader version that will allow us to do a whole lot of other things that we want to do. So this training will really help bring everything together as we planned.
Michael?
May I ask what, what's, what in the purchasing policy requires township board approval?
I think the current travel policy, or training policy was precluding it, and we are about a month out from adopting the new one.
Wait, what's that?
The, the training policy was saying that any trainings that cost over $2,000 was requiring board approval, and we're about a month out from getting the new one finalized.
Okay. I totally, I was thinking, because I was thinking, I was like, this is over, this is under $5,000, all right, okay, got it.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G9, consider adding new seats to Indiegov software program.
Sorry.
Treasurer Slavens.
All right. I was so thrown off, I was, didn't write my notes down. G9. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the updated Indiegov renewal contract and the approved mentioned budget amendment of $30,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The township implemented and went live with Indiegov on February 12, 2024. In this short period, the software has seamlessly assisted in communicating with township residents and other external customers. Given the success, it has become apparent that the original 10 purchase licenses will not suffice to handle the daily influx of inquiries. Adding an additional 15 licenses will be necessary for the software to continue to be successful within the township. There is previously $25,000 budgeted for the renewal of the application, however, due to the additional licenses requested, the total annual cost is now $55,000, and a budget amendment of $30,000 is required. Deputy Supervisor and Director Abegbu, do you want to comment?
I have no comment, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And I believe that our Canton Advocate, Emma Kramer, is available to answer questions as well.
Same with you, Director Abegbu.
No comments, but we'll take questions.
Okay. Tanya?
So who apart from Emma are, you know, is it distributed on, through all the departments that currently use 10 licenses?
Yeah, go ahead, Emma, thanks.
Good evening. Emma Kramer, Resident Service Advocate. As of right now, the 10 licenses are spread out throughout departments. Right now, we have the Supervisors Office, the Communications Team, ITI, myself, Building, Engineering, Clerks, and the Treasurer's Office.
And we, and you are expecting, like, you, more people from different departments asking, like, more people in each department asking for these licenses? It looks like it's being, like, extensively used, which is a good thing, so.
Yes, we are looking to expand to other departments, especially planning. We've noticed could use a C in the software. And because as of right now, we are limited to the 10 seats, only one person per department can have the license, so if that person is gone for a day, people aren't able to log in, so we're looking to provide backups.
Yeah, I would just add that one of the things that we found out through the implementation process is, you know, each department tends to have several forward-facing folks who are, who are, you know, working with residents directly on their issues. And so only having, you know, one license in some departments, maybe two licenses to utilize the software to help resolve resident issues is, is just not enough. You know, each, each department is going to need a couple more licenses in order for everyone to be working on the same platform.
We are getting about 150 incoming tickets every two weeks, and that is from a very small change to the website where we put more basic email addresses, such as the basic supervisor's email address, a very basic MSD email address where residents are clicking into those emails and sending it. Once we have more seats, we will be able to expand that and make more changes to the website where those email addresses are listed, so that we have, the website is set up better for retention and incoming, incoming inquiries from residents are all going to the same area and can be tracked, and make sure that they are all completed, because Indiegov tracks all of the tickets and makes sure that they are all solved, so we will know that residents are receiving responses.
And how long have we been using, like, have you been using this?
Since the first week of February, we launched, February 9.
Okay. I think it's like, we have always had this issue where we were always wondering how the communication would be coming inwards, and I think this is a great addition. If possible, can we get a walkthrough sometime, like, just show us how this product works?
Absolutely, I could provide a demonstration.
Like, sometime in the future.
Yeah, the, the Indiegov company actually has a class, a course, that you can take called Indiegov University. Emma's trained in that course.
I do have my degree.
She's got her degree from Indiegov University, and I believe there, there are others throughout the township who do as well. And through that course, you can learn how, how the software works and how it helps resolve resident issues more efficiently.
I think it's also important to remember that within the framework of Indiegov, we did an analysis of how each department workflow is different, because for instance, we have an account for any license for the clerk's office, because the workflow of the clerk's office is a little bit different. And so the new addition, you have licenses that are going to go to the clerk's office, and that will represent the way the clerk's office works, both, you know, the season, the high seasons and the low seasons as it relates to elections, because you have periods where they are going to be bombarded, or periods where you guys are going to be flooded with inquiries. And so they might end up taking a whole lot more licenses because of the way that they function. And so we are adapting to all those as it relates to the different departments and their dynamics, right? We are also mindful of the fact that things change, right? Nobody saw, for instance, the last time when the tornado hit and, you know, and, and the flooding came, DPW became the go-to place. If Indiegov was available at that time, then definitely it would not be left only to one person to handle the influx of information or inquiries coming in, then you have to assign additional license to be able to deal with all the stuff that, that are coming in. So yes, we have, we're now asking for additional licenses because we know the potential is huge for us to be more responsive in the way we deal with our constituents.
One of the things, because the implementation of Indiegov was February 9, and the election was February 27, and it was an interesting election in the sense that it required a lot of communication with residents, both statutorily, but also pragmatically. We did not utilize Indiegov in the way that we could have for the February 27 election, but in a way that we intend to for August and for November. And as a result, I ended up shutting myself out of the Microsoft server for sending out too many emails. I had sent out about 11,000 emails, and the server didn't like that, so Microsoft shut me out for 24 hours, which was not ideal. There is a mass mailing capacity through Indiegov. Additionally, we can track, you know, when residents would, if residents send in their application for an absentee ballot electronically, which they're allowed to by state law, this allows, you know, we can track that through Indiegov and track the communications through, to the, to the voters themselves. But under the previous model, we only had, the deputy clerk was the only person who had a license, and, you know, one person can't handle thousands of emails, right? So like, that, that kind of shut down our capacity for handling thousands. I would say in, for the February 27 election, probably engaged in 27,000 email exchanges, which is not possible through Outlook from a security standpoint and from a network capacity standpoint.
Trustee Berninski?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to thank Deputy Supervisor, however, for our conversation this afternoon about Indiegov. And to echo what Trustee Ganguly said, I also asked for a demonstration, because the trustees have not ever seen this. We, we don't have an office in this building, and so we, we have no knowledge of it. Other than that, it seems to be working really well for the township, and that was my other point, is that I, I strongly support this because I think this is just something that is enabling us to serve our community much better, and that's always our goal, is to be able to serve our community as best we can.
Diane?
Got to make a quick comment. One of the perks of Indiegov is if we do have a water main break or that, we can send an email out to that specific part of the township instead of everybody, and let them know. So if there are things going on, we can communicate with them in real time, which is an advantage. And I'm glad we're getting more license, because I know I've got water billing and treasury, and so everything is coming to me in the Indiegov. And usually, my, usually my staff helps me with that, and so having other people to be able to answer a lot of the questions, because they're very basic questions, but, you know, still, so I appreciate the extra license.
And one other thing we're looking, like, right now, in the focus, we took two surveys, one on stormwater, you know, in people's neighborhoods, and another one on broadband. And so we're kind of going to test out Indiegov for this type of survey by geofencing areas.
Right. The Indiegov bulk mail feature allows you to send out mass emails and paper mail. With the mass emails, it has a lot of different features. It will tell you how many people open the email, how many people unsubscribe, how many people answer the questions. In real time, you'll receive that feedback, so it will be a very good survey tool. I would also just like to take a moment to brag, because in the Indiegov software, you are able to run reports, and their reports are based on response times in days, but our staff is responding so quickly to residents that our average response time is 0.3 days, is a goofy number. Usually, other municipalities are taking days to answer emails, but we're only taking a few hours, so I would just like to give that shout out to the staff who are using it.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G10, consider reappointment to the Historic District Commission. Thank you, Emma.
Madam Supervisor, I move to reappoint Joanne Deown, Deown, to the Canton Historic District Commission for a three-year term effective through March 26 of 2027.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Joanne Dixon was first appointed to this Historic District Commission in 2018. Since then, she has served the HGC very well through impeccable attendance and volunteer work. Joanne completed an application for reappointment, and the interview committee agrees unanimously that Joanne should be reappointed for another term on the HDC. So Joanne is not on, so I can't introduce her, but she's been doing a great job. Does anyone have any questions or comments about Joanne? Kate?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Joanne for her willingness to serve again. The Historic District Commission is, is a little bit harder to fill, because there are some requirements for being able to serve there. And Joanne is, you know, has the institutional knowledge that, that is needed, and, you know, honestly, we, we got her reapplication, and we're very impressed with, with it, and I'm just really glad that she's, you know, going to do this again for us, is, you know, it's, it's an unpaid position, but it's really important, so, so thank you, Joanne.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G11, consider approval of deferred retirement option program and additional benefit changes for the Director of Police Services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attached resolution from MERS approving the adoption of the Deferred Retirement Option Program for Division 23, to approve this above-mentioned budget amendment and the following benefit changes for the Public Safety Director once eligible and entered into the Deferred Retirement Option Program. Monthly auto allowance of $400 a month, monthly 457 contributions in an amount equal to the difference between what the drop program allows and what the employee would have received had they retired, less the auto allowance, the buyout of their PTO time upon entering the drop program with no future buyouts of PTO allowed.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Effective June 27, 2024, the Director of Police Services will be eligible to retire and receive their full pension benefit from MERS and the township. In an effort to retain the director without negatively impacting them financially, the supervisor is asking the board to approve the attached adoption agreement with MERS to enter into a Deferred Retirement Option Program drop. This will allow 76% of the director's eligible pension benefits to be placed into a trust for them to access upon formal separation from the township, in exchange for a guaranteed additional three-year employment agreement with the director. To account for the financial difference between the 76% pension benefit allowed and paid by MERS and the 100% benefit they would have collected if they had retired, the township will provide a $400 a month car allowance for the director, with the difference being placed into a 457 account. The pension benefits will be paid for MERS and not financially impact the township. The auto allowance and 457 contribution will cost $29,000 per year or $87,000 for a three-year period. Lastly, should the director choose to cash out all of their PTO time before their retirement eligibility date, the township will front-load six months of PTO time into their bank to be utilized for off-time purposes only, time-off purposes only. The director will no longer be eligible for PTO cashouts. In accordance with MERS In accordance with MERS rules, the director must retire from the township after this three-year DROP period. Deputy Supervisor Haver and Director Turnbull, would you like to add anything or comment?
I'm happy to answer any questions. And yeah, I think I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you.
Same. I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you. And the Director of Police Services is Director Bauer, right over there. Any questions or comments? Steven?
We really want to keep this guy?
Yeah. We really, we really, really do.
And so do I. And I'm glad that there's a way that works out for all parties and, and makes it palatable for him to stay on. I'm glad to have him.
Kate?
Yeah, first of all, thank you again, Deputy Supervisor, for answering my questions on this. I am very glad that there's a way that, that we can do this. And I'm thankful that Director Bauer is choosing to serve our community, and it's a choice. And also choosing to work with all of us again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Diane? Do you want to say anything? Just going down the line.
I'm supportive of this, and I'm glad we were.
Thank you. And over here, Michael? Kate? Tanya?
Yeah, I, I agree with all the other trustees, and we are very glad that we are able to keep this. You know, we can still have our police chief, and we are very glad to work with him on different initiatives that we have in the community.
Michael?
Chad, you took over during an interesting time. The entire department was reorganized from the Public Safety Director to Police Director, Director of Police Services, Director of Fire Services. You were elevated in the middle of a pandemic. We had a hard time recruiting under the old contract. Got really dangerously low on officers, and we've been able to bring that back. And you've been leading the ship. We've been, during that course of time, we've aggressively dealt with cultural issues in the community. We have worked on substance abuse, addiction, the opioid epidemic, partnerships with community mental health organizations, bringing in a clinician, creating a citizen oversight board in a way that doesn't create excessive tension between the police force and the community. I don't know how you do what you do. I'm grateful you do. So, thank you. I'm in favor, I'm a favor of this.
Yes, thank you, Director Bauer. No matter where we go, people always ask, hey, you have that police chief, Director Bauer, don't you? And I say, yes, because you do. You're, you're well-known, and your programs that you've started with us have been, are well-known across the state and even the country. And so people always look to us to teach them what we're doing. And you always are a great tutor. You're a great mentor that way also. I know you're the chief of the chiefs right now, Western Wayne County. So we really appreciate everything you do for the community. Thank you. Great.
Does, does Director Bauer want to say something, or maybe after?
Yeah, I guess I'll let you talk before we vote.
Well, first of all, thank you. I'm honored, grateful. My family is very much honored and grateful. We've been here since 1996 and living in this community. It's an honor to serve as a police chief, not only for the citizens and the board, but the police employees. The analogy of being the leader and a mentor, my staff makes me what I am. There's an exceptional foundation that we built upon, and we built upon a lot of things. The goals that were brought to this organization or to this community by this board, and some of the concepts of these folks that came through the ranks and are now in place to initiate a lot of programs and services. So we're very fortunate in the direction that we're headed. And there's much work to do, so I look forward to the next three years.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, that's the end of our general calendar. Now we'll move on to public comment for three minutes. If you could come up to the podium, I will start online. If you want to make public comment online, you can just raise your hand electronically with the reaction. So I see three people. If you want to make public comment, let me know. Anyone in the room want to make public comment? Please go to the podium. State your name in three minutes, please.
We don't yield.
No, we don't yield. Sorry.
Again.
Okay, Mr., we have somebody at the podium right now. Okay, go ahead.
Again, Damacawson, 2011 Lots Road. Just going to speak to the, follow up for what was on G1. In this document here, the comprehensive plan says that the Lots Road corridor strategies are MRD or R6. That's not true. That's a misprint or a false statement. The goal, if I'm going to say this over and over and over again, the goal of the corporate overlay was just as it's written, to bring corporations to the district. We're coming up on the 30-year anniversary of the corporate overlay, and it's been an utter failure. It has not brought any corporations to the corporate overlay district other than what was already established prior to the corporate overlay district, i.e. Home Depot, the development across the street. There's been a few small infills, but there has been no large substantial corporate overlays to the district. So my argument tonight was not to be anti-development with the apartment building because that originally, when it came in 2016, was supposed to be a condominium development, which looked great. It was owners, vested owners in this community. Tonight, we settled for yet another apartment building. And the worst that we could, the most we're looking to get out of that is EV chargers. How about the overlays? How about the CBD? How about the Central Business District? Now we have, both sides of the streets are competing in another fractured mess. We came in front of this panel last month.
One minute, just to let you know.
Thank you. Came in front of this panel last month. Relief for the corporate overlay, and we're denied. Here, they were zoned out of it in 2016. Let's not talk about fairness. And the, and the comment about affordable housing, you know how affordable housing is, is achieved? The owner works for the housing. When I got in this community 44 years ago, I worked two jobs, seven days a week to pay for my home. Nobody gave me anything. I still live in that home today. That's called affordable housing. Live what you can afford. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Hey, want to go up to the podium, state your name?
Hello, my name is Josh Powell. I'm actually a Westland resident, but I am running for the District 25 special election, which includes the southern part of Ken. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I currently work in IT. I got my degree from Lindenwood University in information technology. I have a degree from Purdue in criminal justice, and I'm also pursuing my law degree as well at, at the current time. But yeah, I'm just running. I figured I would introduce myself to you guys and the residents who are watching and say hello. And I'm available for any questions if you have after.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. George, please go to the podium.
Addressed issues on the ditches, on the rain. Massive rain we've had. You've made the statement here that you were going to have the federal engineering, civil engineers look at it. I don't see any update on it anywhere. I'd like to know how it's progressing. If nothing, then done. Since this last flood, to clean up the ditches and clean them out on this flooding problem. Also evidently, out there at the art museum, there's a problem with the flooding. The creek is only 25 foot from the front door. Another, I, I don't quite understand the runabout or turnabout at Sheldon and Palmer. We addressed that issue, and I'd like to know if there's been a study on a stoplight there, timing on rush hours, when, when there's a massive rush hour, when the school's being let out. Because I, why I ask that, you seem to be environmentally green conscious. Because when a tractor trailer dips, tips over like they have at 23 and Geddes Road, you spill about 500 gallons of diesel fuel. And if it cracks the engines, another 40 quarts of oil. And the ditch right there is 25 or 50 foot, goes to the Roots River. Okay. I'd like to know what the problem is over there, and I've addressed it many times, with Woodland Metals, number one landfill. They raised it 25 foot, Eagle has. That dump was closed. It's one of the two. The law states very plainly, if it's closed, it's done. That landfill sit for 20, 30, 40 years, I drove by it out there on the edge of Wayne, and it was level with the road. Now, they can't disturb it, or it's leaking, one of the two. I'd like to know what Eagle's doing with it. And there's no retention pond there, I believe, to catch the runoff water on that slope of a 50-acre dump. That's why there was a flooding problem on Hanan Road at the trucking company there. Okay, the guardrail over there at Palmer Road and Sheldon, don't bother to call about it. It's in the ditch. We've been trying to get that, you guys, to take care of it in Wayne County for the last year or two. So it's leaning on a 45-degree angle for about a quarter mile there. So you, there's no need to do about anything. Now, when you call in some of these ordinances, I'd like to know, and I'll put a foyer out, what the ordinance department duty is. For example, when you see something around, you have to call it in for them to address the issue. So if they're around and about, around town, and they see fences laying down, I can't understand why they can't stop and write up a complaint about it and address the issue. Why does it have to be a resident complain about it? And also on the trash, there's more trash on Van Born Road from Canton Center Road.
Thank you.
No, I don't think my three minutes are calling my clock.
Thank you, George. Thank you. Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Okay, how about starting comments from the staff? Dr. Bauer, you want to start? Anything?
I really don't have any more comments for today, but thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Director Begbu? Director Turnbull? No? Director Norwood? Deputy Supervisor?
I just want to thank Chad for his continued service to the community. You know, you're someone who I consider a mentor and somebody that I look up to. And your service to the community is outstanding, and I'm really glad that you're going to be around for three more years.
Thank you. Trustee Berninski?
I wanted to wish everyone who's on spring break, a happy spring break, and also happy Easter coming up.
Thank you. Director Snyderman?
Ooh, I'm a director now.
Trustee Snyderman.
Yes, happy Easter to everyone who celebrates. And congratulations to Oakland, Oakland University on their basketball win in the first round of March Madness. It's always fascinating to me when a, a school like Oakland can put together a team and beat the, the big guys that are out there and do better than any of the other universities in our state. So, and yes, my wife who went there told me I had to say that tonight.
Thank you. Treasurer Slavens?
Happy Easter to everybody, and I hope everyone is able to enjoy their family this weekend on Easter Sunday. And hopefully we have some nice weather that's dry.
That's right. Clerk Seegerst?
I have no comments.
Trustee Ganguly?
I just wanted to wish everyone coming in happy Easter, and Holy was yesterday. And I think I saw a lot of people wishing everybody a happy Holy. It's a festival of colors, and it was yesterday. And we, I had a conversation with Kevin from Village Arts Factory, and we are thinking next year, we are going to have some sort of event for Holy, the Village Arts Factory. And it's, yeah, it's, although it doesn't look like spring today, but before our next big board meeting, we have the complete solar eclipse on April 8th. So we are very close to it. I've been told Lima Public Library or somewhere in Cleveland is the best viewing, closest to here. So if you want to drive, go ahead and have a look at the total solar eclipse.
Thank you. Thank you. So just to let everybody know, as you know, in the focus, we put out a survey on anywhere that other flooding had been seen. I think we've gotten how many? 222 responses, which we're compiling right now to determine if there's any hotspots that we don't know in the township where there's some flooding. We know where the hotspots are, but we're just making sure that we've got them all. The Army Corps of Engineers is also waiting for that data. And they're going to be giving us the statement of work in terms of what they recommend that we do. But of course, if there's any blockages, you can always report that to Wayne County if you see them, other than what we know about. Actually, as Tanya said, happy Holy, and I know on Sunday, our temple's going to be celebrating that in the back with the Color Festival. So a lot of residents will be there. And as everyone has said, also happy and safe Easter. I know we have a lot planned. I know also a lot of our residents are celebrating Ramadan and Iftar dinner. So happy Ramadan and happy Easter and happy Good Friday and happy every day. Any other comments? All right, kind of a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.